Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we wind? Yeah, that was fine. That was fine. Okay. All right, ladies, the meeting will now come to order. Please turn off your cell phones, anything that beeps. Council members, will you turn off your cell phones? Blackberries, whatever that beeps. Well, we'll give you an exception because he's a baby dude. Yours is okay, we'll give you. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Calling the roll, Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Brady.
Present.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
A quorum is present.
All right, thank you. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In keeping with the rules of council, we now take a moment of silent meditation. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have an opportunity at every one of our meetings for the public to comment on any items that are on the agenda. And I understand that we have one person who has signed in who wishes to comment. That person, please come forward.
Madam President, a Susan Child has signed in to speak.
Well, come on, we'll let you speak. Counselperson Conwell is here. Did he disappear on us?
Behind the wall.
What? He's behind the pillar, okay. Did you come to check on your spouse or what?
Thank you. Here, let me take that.
Okay. All right.
But I want you to process.
Okay. All right, you can have two minutes and give us your name and the purpose of your comments.
Julianne. Yes, my name is Susan Childs. I'm Social Service Director at Just Like Family Home Care.
At what?
Just Like Family Home Care. We're located on the west side. There's also one with the same name on the east side. I don't know why, but there just is. I work with the elderly, sick, poor, mostly homebound in Cuyahoga County. I've been at this job for 27 years. It's like the greatest job in America. There is a systemic problem going on in Cuyahoga County. And I have been to the caseworkers. I have been to the caseworkers' bosses. I've been to the caseworkers' bosses' bosses. And when I finally got to the upper echelon, the answer I got for this issue was really unacceptable. I work with clients who need medical care because they're elderly. They're on social security. If your income on social security is below $923 a month and you live in Cuyahoga County and you also have Medicare, the state of Ohio is supposed to pay your $97.40 a month for your Medicare Part B buy-in. I have probably 10 clients right now who this isn't happening to. I don't know what to do. I finally went to some of the upper echelon who I won't name because I have to work with these people the rest of my career. And I said, "This is a systemic problem in Cuyahoga County. How can we resolve it?" I refuse to believe, because I've done this so long, the caseworkers don't care. I don't believe that. I believe that somehow the training isn't coming through, the information isn't coming through, the computer hookup to Columbus is in error, something's wrong. Oh, do I have to quit?
Well, finish your sentence.
It's right here on number 19 of the application. Do you want help with your Medicare expenses? Yes or no? And I was told everywhere that I talk to people that they didn't know this question was on there. So I have people who, we went to court and we won a court order on August 12th. We have a court order for the state of Ohio to pay this lady's $97.40 and it's still being taken out of her check. This lady's living on $581 because they're still taking the $97.40. This is a real problem. This isn't my individual people, although these two pathetic cases said, yes, I could use their names. We have to fix this.
Okay, Mr. Brady, did you want to?
I just wanted to ask, again, what was your name again, ma'am?
Susan Childs.
Susan, where is Just Like Family Home located?
4430, we just moved. 4432 Pearl Road.
Okay.
In Cleveland 44109. But this one client lives on Helen S. Brown Center. And this client lives in Indian Hills in Euclid.
Could you, Susan, could you leave your telephone number for me and let me try to follow up with you and help?
Thank you, because you can't live on $581 a month.
Well, that's true.
Thank you. We're new and trying to learn all the ropes. But Mr. Brady is Chairman of Health and Human Services and he's going to follow up with you, okay?
Thank you. I have just gone to the next level and the next level and I was getting, I still got, when they told me that there wasn't even a piece on an application, and it's their own application, I just didn't know where to go next.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, we have on the agenda the approval for the minutes of the meeting of February the 15th. Those minutes have been attached to your packet. I assume that everyone has had an opportunity to review them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A move by Ms. Simon, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is any discussion? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Madam President, I would ask if the minutes could reflect the names of the members of council who attended the executive session and the other people who assisted with the executive session as should be included in that record.
I believe that the persons that you're talking about are listed in the minutes of that particular executive session, but if you want to include them in these minutes, that's fine. Do we need to amend the motion or anything? Or just amend the, Ms. Simon, will you consent to the amendment of the minutes? And Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? All right, call the roll on the amended minutes.
Approving the minutes as amended. Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. We usually at this time have a message from the county executive. Mr. Fitzgerald was here for the work session, had to go out, said he would be coming back. Is there anything that you wanted to add, Mr. Avery? Or any announcements you had?
Madam Chair, no, not at this time. The only information was the announcement of the appointment of-
You want to go ahead and make that announcement?
Sure. That on behalf of the county executive, we're pleased to announce the appointment of Mr. Rick Warner as the Director of Health and Human Services. And I will submit his information to you as requested in the morning.
All right, then council will then get that letter and the clock will start running on a confirmation process and we will set up additional confirmation hearings. All right, thank you, Mr. Avery. All right. All right, item A, consideration of resolution of council for first reading under suspension of the rules.
Madam President?
Mr. Miller.
Madam President and my colleagues, I would move that Rule Number 9D requiring that resolutions be read on three separate regular council meetings and Rule 13A requiring reference to committee be dispensed with and that this resolution be placed on final passage for tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
A move by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Greenspan for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Suspending the rules, Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion carried to suspend the rules. And we will proceed with item number 20110068. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
Resolution Number 2011-0068. A resolution providing for the appointment of Joanne Gross as Senior Policy Advisor and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt?
Second.
All right, move by Mr. Schron, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is any discussion?
Just want to comment that Sister Joanne has worked with us since the transition. She's been extremely helpful. We have, in considering hiring her, we also interviewed a number of persons, reviewed applications, interviewed persons from outside, and she was by far the outstanding candidate. So we welcome her to our staff and look forward to working with her.
All right, Madam Clerk, any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Approving the resolution. Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Sister Joanne. And we will expect you at work early, bright and early in the morning.
What else?
As usual. All right, item number nine, consideration of ordinances of council for first reading and referral to committee. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Number 2011-0012. An ordinance amending the public records policy for Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
This is going to be referred to the Rules Committee, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I, Chair, will refer to Rules Committee under the able hands of Mr. Greenspan. All right, next item.
Ordinance Number 2011-0013. An ordinance providing for the adoption of an open meetings policy for Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Once again, this matter will be referred to the Rules Committee under the able hands of Mr. Greenspan and Mr. Miller.
Ordinance Number 2011-0014. An ordinance establishing the Board of Control, establishing procedures governing the making of county contracts and the purchasing of county supplies and equipment, providing procedures for the making of public improvements, establishing procedures under which the county executive may employ experts and consultants in connection with the administration of the affairs of the county, and providing the terms upon which the county may cooperate or join by contract with any municipality, county, state, or political subdivision or agency thereof in making public improvements or providing common services.
And this matter will be referred to the Public Works Committee under the able hands of Mr. Jones.
Madam President, I just have a question. This ordinance has many topics. Are we going to break this out into, our ordinances can only have one topic, one subject?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Madam President, to Councilman Greenspan, this ordinance deals with contracting and procurement and a number of aspects of the same, but I think the contents of this ordinance is very, to use a redistricting term, very compact and contiguous around this particular area. And I think there isn't any question that it would satisfy the single-subject rule.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and just for the record, for the public, the dates of these committee hearings are posted on the website if persons would like to come and participate or view the committee hearing. So this matter will be referred to the Public Works Committee. And I'm sure if there's anything we have to sort out, that Mr. Jones will deal with that.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
If I might, I would like to comment briefly on these three ordinances that I prime sponsored tonight. I thank Councilman Greenspan and Councilman Jones for co-sponsoring them with me. And two of these ordinances, the one on public records and the one on contracting and procurement, these ordinances provide successor ordinances to the 90-day temporary ordinances that we passed on January 3rd. And so the first one would provide a comprehensive ordinance deciding what's a public record and how public records are maintained and how public records are responded to. And we need to reconstitute the County Records Commission, which reviews the requests for changes in the public records retention schedule because the composition of that body changes a little bit as we change to this new form of government. And the contracting ordinance provides for a Board of Control which would approve middle-range contracts in the $50,000 to $500,000 range so that only the largest and most significant contracts would need to go through the full council hearing process. But there will be two members of council on the Board of Control so that it would provide for continuing council oversight of those contracts as well. And the third piece, while it's not required that we have an ordinance defining open and public meetings and providing for notice requirements, we could just rely on state law. Providing our own ordinance to apply that state law locally would be a good statement about the transparency that we aspire to and that would be the purpose of that ordinance. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Brady?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, well, I mean, I always agree with everything that the councilman has put forward, that he's very quickly becoming the John Adams of the new Cuyahoga County Council.
All right, Mr. Schron.
Yes, I just ask that the Public Works Committee, when they look at this, do look at the dollar amount as far as that going before the Oversight Board in regards to that. Because the $50,000, though I will bring it forward at committee time, I believe is lower than what would be, one, is lower than what the Transition Committee recommended. And I think it's also lower than what I think makes sense from a good operations of a procurement department as run by the county executive. I think it should be considered to at least be at the $75,000 and perhaps $100,000 when you go before your committee.
Madam President? And to that point, I also was looking at the suggestions that were put together thus far before going to committee. And I noticed that it said that loans issued by the county below $500,000 would go to the Board of Control, I believe. And I was just thinking, you know, as we look at, we have a loan on this agenda in the amount of $350,000. And I think that when we look at loans, the county actually issuing loans for special projects, I think that's something that the county council would like to see. So I'd like some additional consideration. I'm not on that committee. Actually, no, I am on Public Works, but I'd like some additional consideration when we think about loans.
Madam President?
Mr. Greenspan?
The reason I, on 201114, 0014, why, I believe it very well may be, and I believe our current ordinance captures at least two of these items. First of all, it's no secret I'm completely opposed to Board of Controls. So as the, because I believe it's a totally separate body, it should not be included in the same ordinance as the other items, although I agree it's of the same subject matter. I would have to vote down the whole ordinance because of my position on the Board of Controls. But I do, I would like the committee to consider breaking these out into separate ordinances because I do believe that there are at least two, maybe as many as four, individual subjects in here. And I would just like that for consideration. I'll probably attend one or two meetings, committee meetings, to continue to voice my opinion.
Actually, I see there may be some merit to what you're saying. Because I spoke with Mr. Fitzgerald on Friday on the section, "Establishing Procedure Under Which the County Executive May Employ Experts and Consultants in Connection with the Administration of Affairs of the County." Mr. Fitzgerald said he was aware of it and he really couldn't figure out what the charter drafters were talking about because apparently all these go out for bid anyway. So, yeah, we can work, let's sort it, I think we start with this committee, we can sort it out and deal with those individual issues. Okay? Mr. Schron?
Though I disagree with my colleague, Mr. Greenspan, on the idea of the Public Works, I do recognize that perhaps the determination of whether there should be a Public Works should come first, then with that, then the dollar values to which the Public Works would, excuse me, Border Works, sorry, Border Control would fall before the Public Works Committee. So I disagree with the concept of not having the Board of Controls, but I do recognize that there is legitimacy perhaps to having that be the first item to be addressed. And then with that, the dollar amounts that would go before the Board of Control.
Mr. Miller?
As the prime sponsor, I just want to share with everybody, and I said this to a number of people that I worked on this ordinance, which is that the ordinance that's being introduced tonight is a very early draft. And I felt that an undertaking of this magnitude could not be completed by March 22nd to succeed the temporary ordinance unless we got something on paper to start with that we could work with and discuss. But I fully expect that there's going to be a very considerable modification based on my additional research and based on input from the council and based on further discussions from the administration. And it's far from where it's going to end up. So I look forward to everybody's input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no further discussion on these matters referred to committee. We move on to item 10, consideration of resolutions for first reading under suspension of the rules. Mr. Miller?
Madam President, I move that Rule Number 9D regarding three separate, requiring that legislation be heard at three separate regular council meetings and Rule Number 13A regarding reference committee be dispensed with. And that Resolutions Number 2011-0069, 0070, 0071 be placed on final passage at tonight's meeting.
Seconded by Mr. Schron. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Suspending the rules, Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, item number 0069. Madam Clerk.
Resolution Number 2011-0069. A resolution approving the appropriation of funds for the year 2011 based on the statement of appropriation status dated December 31, 2010, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. One, for free balances for grants and capital projects. Two, for encumbrances for grants and capital projects. And three, for encumbrances for all other funds.
Move to adopt?
A move by Mr. Schron, seconded by Mr. Greenspan. We had an opportunity here from Mr. Rubino at the work session regarding this. So are there any other comments or discussions regarding this matter before we call for a vote? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Approving the resolution. Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Resolution Number 0070.
Resolution Number 2011-0070. A resolution amending the 2011 annual appropriation measure by providing additional fiscal appropriations from the General Fund and other funding sources for appropriation transfers between budget accounts and for cash transfers between budgetary funds in order to meet the budgetary needs of various county departments, offices, and agencies, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt?
Move by Mr. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is any discussion?
Madam President, I just have one question. On the documentation that was provided on the resolution itself, where it outlines the various journal entry postings, I'm just curious if it would be possible for Mr. Rubino to include, let's say, anything over $250,000, which is our limit now on purchasing, just to be consistent? Just some explanation as to, nothing today, but just in the future, an explanation as to the reason for the transfer? I'll just say over $250,000. Just pick, you know, a number so we have a more clear understanding. Because we see the funds moving between accounts, but I'm not sure we truly understand the purpose behind it.
Madam President, to Councilman Greenspan, we're going to be working how we present the memorandum also. What we normally have is the summary information and the detailed narrative for each item. We're going to be kind of front-end loading some of that description in this briefing memo. So you'll be able to scan through that and get a better idea exactly what we're doing. And if you have to go back to the individual narrative, you can do that to get even more information.
Great, thank you.
Fully noted.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Approving the resolution. Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
All right, moving on to item 0071. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution?
Resolution Number 2011-0071. A resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement with Ohio Department of Health in the amount not to exceed $395,000 for the State AIDS Drug Assistance Program for the Ryan White HIV/AIDS Treatment Extension Act Part A for the period January 1, 2011 through February 28, 2011, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Madam Council President?
Yes. Let's have a motion, then we'll have discussion.
Madam, move to adopt?
Second.
By Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Jones. Mr. Brady?
Madam Council President, I understand this to be a simple reallocation of funds, but because we didn't discuss it at all in the Health and Human Services Committee, I'd like Mr. Warner to come up and briefly explain this resolution.
Good evening, Rick Warner from the Office of Health and Human Services. This agreement is, as Councilman Brady said, a reallocation of existing federal funding that we get for the Ryan White program, which funds services for folks who have either HIV or AIDS. As the year goes by, and this happens in other programs as well, where we see underspending in certain parts of a program, we have the ability to reallocate money. This is all federal money that flows to the county. And we are asking to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Health that will allow them to use this funding as this particular Ryan White fiscal year ends in order to provide additional prescription drug assistance for people who live with either HIV or AIDS in- drug assistance for, for people who live with either HIV or AIDS in, in our service area. So again, it's existing resources to pay for prescription drug assistance for folks suffering from HIV or AIDS. And we appreciate the, the fact that council would consider it on first reading because we have to have this in place by the end of the Ryan White fiscal year on, on February 28th in order for the state to be able to use these resources.
So is this money that we got from the federal government and now we're paying it to the state?
Yes, ma'am, but we're paying it to the state so that they can provide prescription drug assistance for people suffering from HIV and AIDS in Cuyahoga County.
So it's not money coming out of the general revenue.
It is not money coming, it is, it is direct pass-through. And, and again, this, we have the, these resources under contract with other providers who were underspending. And so projecting forward, we didn't want to, we wanted to make sure, in fact, that we weren't sending any resources back to the feds when we have, when we have people who have HIV and AIDS who need these prescription drugs in Cuyahoga County. So we did the agreement with the Ohio Department of Health, and they operate the prescription drug assistance program that, that this additional $395,000 will fund.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Madam Chair, to Rick Warner, I'm not understanding the dates, why sort of short period of time.
Because the, it essentially reflects the fact that they are providing, I think using other funding right now, they are providing these prescription assistance to folks. This allows them to use funding that would otherwise go back to the federal government to do this. So it's only, it's only a two-month period. And so essentially, they already have folks who are on their rolls, if you will, for prescription drug assistance. And this is allowing us to use this funding to, to pay for that prescription drug assistance so we don't otherwise use state or, or, or local dollars that could be used for other purposes.
All right, anything further? Can I call the roll, please?
Approving the resolution, Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Schron. Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Number eight, item 11, committee reports and consideration of resolution for second reading under suspension of the rules. Mr. Miller.
Madam President, I move that rule number 9D requiring that resolutions be heard at three separate regular council meetings be dispensed with, and that resolution number 2011-0067 be placed on final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
By Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Schron. Call the roll, please.
Suspending the rules, Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Yes.
Germana.
Yes.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right.
Resolution number 2011-0067, a resolution authorizing an advanced energy forgivable loan in the amount not to exceed $350,000 to the Lincoln Electric Company for a wind turbine project located at 22801 St. Clair Avenue, Euclid, authorizing the county executive and/or director of development to execute all documents required in connection with said loan, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion?
Yes, if you could just reflect on the records, for one, from administrative standpoint, that on the environmental sustainability, that the chair is, Mr. Rogers, reflect that?
So noted.
Thank you. This was, this is an exciting project on behalf of the county. And what it is, is today we had our economic development committee, I started out chairing it, and then Mr. Brady finished it up. What it is, is Mr. Zupa was, is the lead person, I believe, from economic development in regards to this project. Mr. Zupa, maybe perhaps you'd like to come up and, and bring everybody up to speed on this? Zuko, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Zuka.
Greg Zuka with the County Department of Development.
Sorry.
Yes, we've been working with Lincoln Electric now for approximately a year and a half now on this project. And this loan, the project will help Lincoln Electric grow their wind tower fabrication business. They're going to be training for employees on operation and maintenance of wind turbines, as well as educating interested turbine manufacturers on how to use their welding products. The project will also help Lincoln Electric reduce their rising energy costs, will help, which will help their manufacturing facilities located in Euclid become more competitive and allowing them to maintain their operations in Euclid. Thirdly, this project will help Lincoln Electric reduce their carbon footprint by reducing their dependency on coal-burned electric power. And lastly, Lincoln Electric will be continuing to work with the County Department of Development and the county's Energy Development Task Force to attract a wind turbine manufacturer, the name of the company is Kenersys, who is based in Germany, but interested in entering the U.S. market. This project will be buying their first turbine that will be entering into the U.S. market, and we're hoping that this will help attract them to locate their facilities here in Cuyahoga County as they begin to enter the U.S. market. Real quickly, the, the terms of the loan, as was read, it's a $350,000 forgivable loan. There are four milestones in which the company must meet in order to receive the forgiveness. The first and foremost, as I alluded to in some of the project description, is that the company will train for new employees on operation and maintenance of the turbine, that they will continue to partner with the county as they generate leads from their internal seminars, when they have seminars on welding, and that they will retain 60 jobs. Secondly, that they will use local content in the amount of loan, $350,000 of content purchased from Cuyahoga County. That could be in terms of concrete, rebar, or some of the labor services for the installation of the project. Thirdly, that they will continue to partner with Kenersys to provide them access to the turbine for research and development purposes, and that they will continue to work with the task force to track Kenersys to locate here. And lastly, to improve the air quality for Cuyahoga County. As we all know, Cuyahoga County is currently non-attainment status for its air quality, and this project we see as an opportunity to invest in clean renewable energy technology for the county as we try to clean our environment and demonstrate tech, new technologies and create jobs.
Madam Chair. Schron.
I think a couple of other points, Madam Chair, that was that the total investment in this project, I don't know if you, if you mentioned that, is $2.9 million. So it's a, it's a massive project. It's, the hub height will be 278 feet in the air. This will be a showpiece for, I believe, for Northeastern Ohio in, in respect to, to the wind turbine field. And Seth Mason, the engineer from Lincoln, is actively involved in, from going to Germany, looking at the projects, inspecting and identifying. And I think it's, it was a very impressive project as far as the way the whole thing was coming together, to include the fact that this will be producing at least 10% of their assumed total energy over at Lincoln Electric in the future. So I think it's, it's a, we, we've seen some exciting projects in economic development, in construction, in fact, of seeing casinos, which are great projects, and, and the medical mart, this is one in which it will have the ripple effect into multiple jobs down the road. So, and I think it also got voted out today at the committee unanimously from the committee's side, so, yes.
Very much, Madam President, and just wanted to correct the record that the committees today were joined, committee meetings, economic development, and as well as sustainability with Julian Rogers, Councilman chairing. I want to state that I'm particularly pleased with this project, given that it's in District 11 in Euclid, which is the district I represent. And I, I believe after hearing this presentation today and studying the different aspects of the project, that it will create a spillover effect, not only in Euclid, but throughout the county. I think the investment may yield exponential benefits and results and, and provide Euclid and establish Euclid as a leader in, in wind and, and alternative energy manufacturing and technology. There's so much space and land available in Euclid primed to house hopefully some manufacturing outfits that may come from out of the, out of the country. I'm, I'm hoping we'll be able to land the manufacturing arm of, of this company. So I'm, I'm excited, and, and I know it's only the beginning because in order for this county to move forward, as well as the state, the future is in, in green and alternative energy. That's, and so this is just the beginning, and I hope my colleagues support this because it's extremely exciting, and I'm particularly proud to have it in District 11.
Mr. Schron.
My colleagues point out that I can't read my own writing. It's a two, 5.9, not 2.9. So if I, if I said that, I apologize. It's a $5.9 million total project. And my colleague, Simon, was also commenting about the, the hard work that was done in looking into this. The folks at Lincoln also are going to not operate at, at any risk where there's any ice being created. So they voluntarily will be shutting it down, any ice buildup and any shadowing controls are, are built in. So they have specifically identified times that they will not even be generating it, even though they put the investment in, which is commendable for the, all the folks at Lincoln Electric for what they've done and how they stood forward on this. For, I think I may comment even during our early sessions back in November, that currently right now, we have one of the largest gear manufacturers for wind turbines here. And I saw that the bolt manufacturer was there with the president today for the wind turbines out there. I also know that the bearings are being made here, and the, the fiberglass blades are all being manufactured right here in Northeastern Ohio today. This would be the first time that one would come together to do the total assembly, which is the last key component of, of putting these wind turbines together. Very exciting for our county.
Mr. Schron neglected to, to comment that he had an opportunity to meet with the president today. He left all his loyal Democrats working, working away. But I, I mean, but on a serious note, it's very important, and it's important to note that we, as the county council, represented at that very, very important meeting, I'm sure we're ably represented by, by Mr. Schron.
Thank you. It was.
Picture.
Yeah. Sorry. As we say, we wear dual hats sometimes, and so I was wearing my, both my council hat and my, my, my business hat in regards to that. So today was an exciting day to have the President of the United States here talking about business entrepreneurship, renewable energy, the workforce development, and export. So I think it was a, it was an exciting day for our county. I think that we, as, for anyone who was at the kickoff of the casino, we are in a position where I'd be doubling down on Cuyahoga County, so, thank you.
All right, any further comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Germana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just talk a little bit about the forgivable part of this. The one question I, I had, if all the, the four parts are, are met, we forgive the loan, what about the fee? I see the fee is 4%. Are we forgiving that, or is that earned?
No, they will be making interest-only payments on, on the principal outstanding amount. So as each of the milestones are met, the principal will be forgiven, thus reducing the interest payment that they'll be paying. And it will be doing it on a quarterly, or on a annual basis. So as each, each milestone is met, the, the forgiveness on the principal outstanding amount will be, will be granted, and thus their interest payments will be reduced eventually to zero.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Germana.
You know, people may be wondering, you know, why would we be forgiving $350,000 for a project like this? And, you know, about a decade ago, the city of Parma passed legislation that made it very attractive for GM to put $100 million in stamping equipment at, at the Parma GM stamping plant. And that equipment and that investment really saved the Parma plant when their GM is closing plants around the country. And this kind of investment where Lincoln Electric's going to be able to be saving on energy will make them competitive in, in, in producing their products in comparison to different competitors around the country. So, you know, in, in effect, we're going to be helping secure jobs right, right here in Cuyahoga County by making Lincoln Electric more competitive.
Mr. Schron.
And to follow up on, thank you, Madam President, on Mr. Germana's comments there. Today during the hearing, it was identified that Lincoln Electric is involved with 85% of all the wind turbines that go in across the world, meaning that a wind turbine doesn't exist until a welder actually puts it together. So all the rest of the stuff that sits on top of that pole has to sit upon a welder, and if 85% of those are touching somehow, Euclid, Ohio, Cuyahoga County, we're touching at a very good spot. And by the way, he also described the base it fits in about the circumference of what we're looking at here in the, where the, in front of the council chambers. That'll, that'll take that up.
Lincoln Electric, Lincoln Electric has been in this community since 1895, so we still certainly want to keep them for a long, long time. All right, any, Madam Clerk, you want to call the roll?
President.
Mr. Rogers, I'm sorry.
I just had one comment. I, I do share the enthusiasm of my fellow colleagues, and I think that this project will definitely help grow Lincoln Electric and hopefully bring some additional business to, to Cuyahoga County. I did have one question. It was mentioned in our committee meeting that we're in competition with Michigan on the potential site if the company, I forget what they're called again.
The name of the company is Kenersys.
Kenersys. If Kenersys does proceed in developing a facility or building a facility here in the United States, that we're in competition with Michigan. And I'm wondering, does Michigan have a similar demonstration project like we're doing here in, in Lincoln Electric?
Not at present. Kenersys is looking for follow-on projects because, because they are a newcomer to the wind energy industry. They need to have their turbines up and running for a period of time in order for financial institutions to prove their technology and that it would be financeable for a developer who's looking to do a, a large-scale wind farm. So they do need to get additional turbines up and running. The, in Michigan, they are working very closely with some of the utility companies in Michigan. They're, the state of Michigan's renewable energy portfolio standard is requiring that their utilities begin to invest in these types of renewable energy projects such as wind. We have a similar renewable energy portfolio standard in the state of Ohio, which is, these are helping to drive the industry. So that's really where, where it's at right now, is that the utility companies in, in Michigan have, have expressed some strong interest in, in doing some projects and potentially using a Kenersys turbine.
Will this be their first one in the United States, though?
In Lincoln, yes. It will be their first product in the United States.
Thank you.
Madam President? Just an additional comment on, on that. What we learned in the committee as well is that due to the change in our state house and the government, our Department of Development is gone, and, and we are facing a new form of development department at, privatized at the state, and Michigan is, has some pretty good tax incentives, I believe. So I'm hoping with the change of government down south that this, this project will be able to come, come to our state despite that. And one last comment, I mean, this development is essential to the county, essential to Euclid and District 11, but we also know that there's some concerns from environmentalists regarding migratory birds, and I just wanted anybody who's interested, as I was, that there's some environmental impact studies that are in the process right now, and this specific project does not have an abundance and a population of migratory songbirds because of, songbirds because of where this turbine is located, it's not on the lake. So that's going to be a different issue once we start moving these turbines into the lake, but there are studies that are being conducted now.
All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
My apologies, I didn't hear who was the second on this motion.
Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Approving the resolution, Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Zuka.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Zuka. We look forward to hearing progress reports on that, on the project.
Thank you very much.
Name tag.
I said Zuko.
It's Zuka.
Oh, Zuka, all right.
I hit a P, you hit a...
All right. Whatever your name is.
Greg.
Greg, right, okay. All right. Item 12, consideration of an ordinance for first reading and referral to committee. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance Number 2011-0015, an ordinance to expire honor before June 30, 2011, providing for the approval and adoption of human resources policies and procedures for Cuyahoga County.
Moved. Second.
Oh, wait, wait, we got to, this is going to committee?
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't need a motion, right? Right. I did, this is going to go to the Human Resource Committee. Ms. Hara, would you like to come up and address the council on this?
Yes. My name is Elise Hara. I'm Director of HR. Good evening. Madam President and council members, the administration is respectfully requesting approval of the ordinance to enable the distribution of HR policies and procedures to all agencies in the new county government. These will be a platform and the first step towards consistency throughout the county.
All right. Then the Human Resource Committee will be taking a look at those. I think we've already gotten some drafts, and we'll have an opportunity to take a look at them, and when we report it back from committee, we'll put it back on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any miscellaneous committee reports?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let Ms. Elise know that we will be in council committee tomorrow, so it'll go to committee tomorrow.
All right. Any other miscellaneous committee reports? Miscellaneous business? All right. Any public comment unrelated to the agenda?[1721.01]